7:03, I'm Acting Chairman Bruno Maiene for tonight. Commissioner, Chairman O'Reilly is not with us. This meeting will be hybrid, February 17th, 7:03 start. I see we are no longer with go-to meeting, we're at Zoom for this. Let's, oh, that's right, that's right. This meeting will be recorded and available on Town's website, all that good stuff that we go through all the time. So let's, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge of Allegiance?
In the United States of America, a free republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll starting to my right. Dominic Smergalino, alternate.
Dominic Panichia, alternate.
Ryan Condon, Commission Secretary.
Leanne Brosian, Commissioner.
Robert Westlin, Commissioner.
Nicole Lupo, alternate.
Rick Schultz, Town Planner.
Sarah Strad, Reporting Secretary.
We need the chairman's position filled, so, Ryan?
Dominic S. is up.
Will be sitting?
Yes.
This is for public participation, so for anybody online or anybody in audience, anything not related to our agenda tonight that they would like to talk about, please feel free. I'm hearing none from either. Start with the public hearings.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of new exhibits.
Fire away.
Okay, we have the new stormwater management plan from Spath B. Orklin, Exhibit Number Seven. We have Exhibit Number Eight, Town Engineers Revised Plan, Revised Report, and Exhibit Number Nine, the Health Department's Report dated February 17th.
Anything else?
That is all.
All right. And this is SCP-2021-15395 Monroe Turnpike for the applicant.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, good evening, Mr. Chairman, the Commission, Mr. Schultz for the best, Chris Smith. And for you this evening. Here we come this evening on behalf of the Seventh Realty LLC. And with me this evening, we have Jason Edwards of Jason Edwards Associates LLC, merged with Spath B. Orklin. I think we might have Joe Boskus from BHBR Traffic Engineering. And then from Seventh Realty LLC, we have Michael Cabello, I see is here, Alex Di Pietro, and Manny Canero is here in attendance.
Jason.
On behalf of the owner, we do have Greg Steiner and Chris Steiner. At the close of the public hearing at the last meeting, we were asked to follow up with some architectural designs and whatnot, we'll get to that in a moment, and some landscaping for screen, some of the lights at the window for the Dunkin' Donuts. And again, this is an application for Dunkin' Donuts, it's a special exception, a special permit because of the drive-through window that kicks it into the special permit. So we have actually essentially a site plan relative to the store and a special exception or special permit for the accessory component. We did look into the engineering comments from Mr. Schatzlein, and Jason did prepare, added those revisions, those plans were submitted to you as well as Scott and Mr. Schatzlein turned up to look through them and went over those with Jason Edwards today, I think.
Today.
There are a couple of items what we'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, is walk through some of those revisions for the Commission, because that's what's in front of you, the plans, those revised plans. There are a couple of components to the recommendations from Mr. Schatzlein that we would like to just address with the Commission, and includes an official turning movement for WB-50 truck coming off the site and into the main entrance into the square, and that could possibly result in, as it goes into the entrance lane, as it goes through the turn, are backing up possibly into Monroe Turnpike. And there was another issue concerning islands or painted or landscapes and accommodating a snow removal and, possibly affecting some of the parking spaces. In addition, Jason will go through some of the landscapes enhancements that were done relative to the lighting, and then what we can do is we'll pull up the architectural changes where you want to handle, Michael Cabello and folks from Seventh Realty, here to respond to any questions that they have, hope they jumped on it right away once Dustin does, and like what you say. So with that, with Chair's permission, I'll turn the presentation over to Jason.
Jason Edwards, Jason Edwards Associates Engineer Surveyors, 27th Stephanie Road, Easton. So, last couple of days, I've been going back and forth with Scott Schatzlein, the Town Engineer. He had a series of comments. What we tried to do was get them all addressed and resubmitted to you guys so that we could say, hey, we addressed all these comments. That was the reason for the late submission. None of the comments really affected any of the site layout elements. Minor changes to the sidewalk is really the only thing that changed. It's different. This sidewalk, he asked us to bring it over to here so that when the pedestrians walk off of it, you know, you'd walk across to the sidewalk before we had it coming straight out. So, that was really the only change that would maybe be noticeable. Other than that, everything was technical. There was some drainage computations you wanted changed, we changed some of the inverts inside the drainage structures to account for the changes in the drainage calculations. In the end, we got stuck on two issues that Chris identified, WB-50 movement in and out of the site. You can see now, you know, we've got the vehicles enter here, come through, let me just get the truck. So, the truck would come through here, go around the building, come back out, and then exit through the larger parking lot, come around and come back out, the straight approach to the exit. What Scott has asked is that we have the truck come out and make this turn and come back this way through here. I do have a plan that shows it. This is just a sketch that I put together so you can kind of demonstrate what he's asking for. So rather than going up this way, he's asked that we come this way. And to accommodate that, we would have to eliminate the parking that we show here, there's three spaces there as well as some islands, you know, which we do, we can do, we have enough parking, it's feasible. The concern is that this truck comes this way and it's going head-on, it can't make this turn tight enough to stay in its lane, so it would be head-on with anything coming in. That's one issue. The other is if there's someone at a light here trying to get out, it could stop behind there, then this blocks anybody from coming in. I agree with Scott that it's going to be a rare occurrence that these trucks are in there, anytime that's busy, the trucks are most likely coming in early morning hours to deliver things. But, in my opinion, having the truck go this way, it gives you a shorter crossing, you're in and out of the way, and then the truck can come around here. This parking lot, you know, is rarely full, so you have the ability to maneuver through here and come back out the entrance. So, that was the largest issue that we'd like the Commission's take on, which way they'd prefer. And do you want me to go to the second one now, or do you guys want to?
No, let's get the Commission's take on it now. Tom?
Yeah, one more thing too. Is this creates a very wide pavement area here, so you've got like 50 feet of pavement there, and that's just going to look awkward when you come in there, it's just going to be a big open paved area.
Okay.
That was my.
Tom? I would probably go with the turn to the left. Yeah, I think it makes more sense.
I agree. Dominic?
Well, I have a CD license, and so from the point of view of a trucker or somebody driving a large vehicle and taking consideration life, safety, and maneuverability, I don't recommend going inside, I recommend going out, swinging over, and coming out.
So, the original?
The one that's to the left.
Yes, the original.
That's what's proposed, yes.
Same, minus the license. The only problem I have with it is that those are parking spaces that are there, right, that you're trying to turn into. Okay, as at shopping center, like you say, it's not that busy, but if it gets busy or if there's other people in there, I know that there's a Dairy Queen that gets pretty filled up during the summer there, and so you have to go into that parking lot with a tractor trailer truck, walk in between those cars and everything like that, I can understand your concern, you really should keep it on your property when you're about to get back out to the turn lanes, because I understand what you're saying, you're going to make it wider there, but on the other hand, you're creating some kind of a safety factor over there by bringing back your trailer truck to where those parked cars are.
Yeah.
And I know, because I've been there, when Dairy Queen's there, it gets packed up and there's a bunch of people walking through there and walking, and you say that they come late at night or whatever, and I also saw his comment that he was saying that you can't get a tractor trailer in there during, where there's a big line of cars waiting to get in there, you won't be able to make it through there. Is that true, or you don't have enough rate, you don't have enough to get by there?
If the line is completely full, there would be, I don't know that the tractor trailer would make it through. But the intent is to have those deliveries happen, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there.
Mr. Penera just indicated that usually twice a week are deliveries between eight and nine o'clock in the morning, so that's when that would happen. So there wouldn't be presumably the parking in the parking lot in Village Square, but there would be cars obviously coming in and hanging a left hopefully to Dunkin' Donuts, to the store. So at that time, sir, that's when there would be traffic is, if that, those twice, and again, it would be a limited time, two times a week, but it would be early in the morning in that eight to nine range, so Dairy Queen wouldn't have that situation in the summer with people stopping.
No, I understand, I just say that the problem is that, like, he noted in his comments that, basically that if there are people that are in a drive-through, there's no way a tractor trailer truck's getting anywhere.
Well, it would have to be a line.
And you're open 24 hours, right? This store's going to be open 24 hours?
Store hours is five to nine. Five to nine or 10, yes.
And I mean, the reality is it can follow the cars through the drive-through if it had to, you're going to get a backup while the trucks park there, but, you know, as the cars move through, the lane would open and it would go through, nothing's going to get in the way to block it.
All right, what about fire apparatuses and stuff like that, are we going to be able to get through there?
Yeah, a fire truck would be smaller than a WB-50, so.
There's enough space on the backside there?
Yeah.
So those cars only going to queue in one lane?
Yeah, if so. They're going to queue here.
I think that's the bypass lane.
This is the bypass lane over here.
Right. But you have another pickup.
The truck can park over here and park, and then you have room to get around it.
But don't you have a window that is just for?
There's a, I don't know what the Dunkin' people call this, but there's a bypass here for the mobile orders, but that is just.
Is there a separate window to that?
It's, no, they merge back together, so it's basically that you get to skip in line right there, if you've got a mobile order, you can jump.
Two windows?
Of course, the same window, it's just that you can kind of come through without having to stop and put in an order right there.
It's not like McDonald's where there's the two ordering boards.
No, I know.
There are two windows.
There's a pickup and a pay window.
But down there.
One menu. What is it?
Yeah, one menu board, yes.
Yes. No, I got the menu board.
There is two windows.
There's two windows, one to pay, one to pick up.
Yeah.
They're on that side.
It's a bypass lane for the app.
If you order online, you don't have to order at the mobile port, so you pull up and you go ahead of the.
Hold on a second, hold on. Guys, guys.
I'm sorry, just.
Shh, or go outside. What I'm saying is, if.
I don't have the capability to.
Window, okay, you don't need to go into the pay window.
You still get in the same line, I think they said that they, correct me if I'm wrong, but they alternate and they change up which one is pay and which one is pickup depending on how their flows are.
The way I look at it is that you have your bypass pay window going that way, so you can go around.
They only bypass the order board, and then they merge back right there, that's why the orange merges back into the purple there, it's not intended for them to continue all the way around, they just merge right there.
So there's no possibility of them getting to that pickup window and blocking that?
I mean, they'd have to just pull out of line and then walk over to the pickup window, I mean, that's.
Well, they're going to pick it up with their car, aren't they?
Yeah, I mean, that's from their car window, no, there's no way for them.
My problem is, is that I don't want to see somebody going to the pickup window and blocking off that section over there, and that I think possibly could happen.
I mean, like I said.
Well, you're going to have somebody that's going to be a pay window, they're going to order by the menu board, then you're going to have somebody ordering from the, what do you call, and they all got to pick up at the end window over there, but somebody's not going to be waiting in the line for the menu board, they're not going to do that, they're going to bypass it and go around to the, where the other window is, that's the way it looks like you have it set up there for, that's why the yellow mark is there, and that's why the pink mark is there, right?
And the yellow mark is just for, basically you skip one ahead, so if somebody's ordering, you skip one person ahead, they're parked, the rest of the line's moving, so then you merge in front of them while they're still ordering.
But where are you going to merge at?
Right there, the. Sorry.
It's every other, it's.
So, so you, this guy's going to be paused here while he's ordering.
I get it, I get it, I think it's.
And these cars are all going to be continuing to pick up their food, so these cars will be moving forward. So as this person is stopped, these cars would move forward, this car that's here would move in front of that car, like in line, because they've already ordered, they don't need to stop at the order board.
But that guy that's behind it has got the order board, he's going to say, what's this jerk doing, cut me off? I'm just saying to you, is this what's going to happen?
I'm sure that's.
That's going to happen, so there's got to be some way to prevent that from happening.
Can I, can I comment? This is Alex Di Pietro, I'm one of the operators and owners of Seventh Realty and the Dunkin'. How are you guys tonight?
Good.
As it pertains to that whole on-the-go lane, basically, we have it in other locations, I don't disagree with you, there's always that question of why is this guy cutting me off, which, in the brand's perspective, which we aren't the brand, we're just the operators, is that it's more incentive for that person behind to say, why were they cutting me off? Now I'm going to download the app and be a person in the, doing the cutting off next time.
Like the speed pass.
So, where that menu board creates a pause for the person to place their order, that then creates the gap in the line for the person who already placed the on-the-go to slide in, it's less of kind of cutting off, and it's more of filling the gaps to keep momentum in the line and prevent stacking back. Does that make sense? I don't know if I explained that well, but.
No, I understand, I understand what you're saying, well, we've already had an issue over at McDonald's across the street.
Sure, and this is, this is a bit different than McDonald's, that's the only reason I kind of clarify is because, whereas there's two menu boards at McDonald's where both orders are being placed at the same time, and it's more of a race to fill the gap, the person who's in the orange, just for clarification, where, so you kind of get what I'm saying, the person on the outside lane doesn't have to do anything, all they have to do is merge when there's an opening, they've placed their order, they just continue as, as normal. The geo-fencing in the app allows us inside to understand that they're in line, so there's nothing they have to do, whereas on McDonald's, and I'm just using that as the example, they'd have to pause and actually place an order.
The only concern I have is that if somebody starts to block the bypass lane and sort of fire apparatus or anything like that, and I mean, Scott's concern's already about the big truck, he can't get it through there anyway with theirs, but my concern is I want to prevent that from happening.
Sure, and that, and that second window also isn't necessarily a pickup window, what we typically do with the second window is that's just more of a bulk order drive-ahead window, so that plays into that point as well. So, if I'm just getting a coffee and a donut, I'll pull up to that first window pay, and my order will be ready because it's a smaller, you know, traditional order for our business. The second window's for the people who need a dozen donuts, you know, Boxer Joe, five sandwiches, that whole thing. So that, the idea that someone might kind of merge out and sit is unlikely, it's more of this constant flow around a potential car that may have pulled up.
Mr. Chairman, can I? Why not? Leon raises a good point. This Commission has seen three different hybrids. You have McDonald's with a single approach and then merges into two. Dunkin' Donuts, one lane that has the bypass lane, and Penera Bread has an express lane, two. So there is a learning curve going on with the patrons all across America on this, it's happening to me. By the way, I went to McDonald's tonight and things were flowing nicely. There is definitely a learning curve, and management has to stay on top of it.
Okay.
So you are seeing a different hybrid tonight.
All right, Leon?
Okay, for now, we go on to the next.
All right. I wasn't going to ask about the merge, but now that we're on the topic, is there any physical obstructions in place for the ingress of the merge to stop people from running parallel with the people that are in line? Is there anything to kind of usher these cars over?
No, nothing as of now. I'm not sure what you would do, you know, you have the bypass there.
Striping?
Sorry, what?
Striping signage?
Yeah, it's colored striping, it'll be colored just like that.
I think it could be an issue like Leon says, that, you know, that people are just kind of not wanting to piss anybody off and pulling up next to them. I don't think it's a planning and zoning issue, I think it's more of a Dunkin' Donuts issue, and I do think it will be, there will be some aggravated people, I don't think it's going to be a huge problem for us, but I think that that merge, I would feel uncomfortable merging in front of somebody that I would get a, you know, dirty look or something. So, I think that may be a problem, but I think it'll eventually work, you know, I think it'll, people will start to fall, and it's usually the same customers every day, and they're going to realize what they're doing.
Still learning.
Why people are pulling in, you know? Getting back to the truck now, yeah, I think that the decision should be made in the spirit of safety, of course, and the original layout, I think, is the safest option. You know, I don't like that big swing, I'm worried about cars being in the right-hand lane, being backed up, and the truck being gridlocked right there. That does happen, or, you know, at rush hour, that happens a lot. Now, the frequency, you said twice, two times a week?
Twice a, twice a week in the hour, somewhere eight, nine o'clock in the morning.
Okay, and because of the particular location of this, I mean, we're not swinging behind the shopping center like we traditionally would do, this is out front, so we have to get a little bit creative. The truck's going to have to go up front, there's plenty of room up there, there's not a ton of people walking around, and that shopping center's typically pretty full. The truckers, you know, cognizant of pedestrians and that type of thing, I think it'll be fine, and I think it'll be safer than, than the proposed revision there, so I'm a fan of the original layout.
And for the record, the Steiners are here and comfortable with it, so.
Okay. That's all I have.
Nicole?
Regarding the merging, do any other Dunkins have this feature now, the extra lane to bump around, or is this new?
That's a, that's a new setup for us, we don't have in the area, anything like that.
Okay. And the setup is similar, I don't know which ones you guys own or manage, but it's very similar to the one in Seymour I go to as well, where you have this quick right to get out, back onto where it is, but I agree, I think I feel safer having them go across the original way and go up and around. I do know that time of day Dairy Queen's not open, I do know that Medical Center probably is, I know they are open then, but those cars are usually parked to the left.
Side, yep.
The nail salon, I don't think is open that early in the morning, and I don't know what else is in there, I'm more, I feel more comfortable letting them up.
Karate Place. Karate Place.
Karate Place.
Karate Place.
None of them open.
That early in the morning.
It's a better.
So I would prefer it to come back around the original way. But I appreciate the work you did trying to put together an alternate for that. And that scares me though, because if the car's coming in, I just see a catastrophe happen, so.
And you know, I, for they had their coffee.
Exactly.
I think encourage some type of signage, just for your guys' behalf, to let people know that these are the, you know, the mobile customers that are merging in, just heads up.
Have something that.
Yeah. Again, I don't think that's our deal, I just, just suggesting.
No, I agree, some kind of sign saying mobile orders only, because somebody will get upset and.
Yep.
Mobile orders merging, yeah.
All right, so, I have a couple of consents. I, I definitely am in favor of the first, the original one, right, with the, with the truck coming out. My fear of, my fear of that swing, God forbid there's a couple cars here, and then that, that tractor trailer gets stuck, and, and then we're, we're backed up on the road, and we're, so, so on and so forth. How, I guess it's not really our issue, but kind of is, is they're going to, we need to, not we, you guys need to tell that tractor trailer driver, this is how you exit, so.
That's not going to be open, though, if they don't include the revision, that won't even be an option, right?
Yeah, that's one of Scott's points was that the truck's natural way is going to be to go to the right, but it can't because it can't make that turn, it really can only go that way, that we're showing.
So if, if.
If you go to the original, there's.
Yeah, what we're.
There'll be three more spots there.
Yes, but if, but if those spots are not occupied, that driver's going to.
There's going to be landscaping.
Yeah, this turn, they can't make that turn the way that we have it currently designed because these parking spaces are.
I understand they can't make that turn, that doesn't mean they don't.
They'll try.
To make that turn?
Yeah, that's true.
And I don't want to get into the point of.
I think we could add a sign that says truck exit this way or something.
Just something simple, it doesn't have to be an ice or, just, I mean, I'm assuming after a while, it's probably the same delivery guy that constantly comes, or it's the same company that Dunkin' has, I mean, I'm just, my thought is, let's just make sure that we, we guarantee that they go that way. And as for Nicole's point, you know, with the medical office, most of those people do park, there's another section of, of spots.
Right.
They'll park more there and then alongside the building, and, and actually, my, my kids go to the doctor there, so those, if they do have a COVID or something, they have to park in the back through a separate entrance. So I'm comfortable with that. The mobile order pickup, not often do I agree with Rick, but Rick, you got me today, man, we're in agreements. I think this is totally a, it's a new thing to everyone, right? Okay, I mean, I've got my 70-year-old mother on Facebook, I never thought that would ever happen, you know, so. So things do constantly change, and, and I understand where Leon's coming from, where, hey, this guy may skip and we may get an argument, but, you know, after a while, it's, it's, people will understand, so I'm good with it, all that kind of stuff, so. As long as with those two topics, I think the Board's pretty much in agreement, so you could go on with the rest.
Another issue, still outstanding, is the other side of this island here that separates the new Dunkin' Donuts parking lot from the existing parking lot, we propose to install these painted islands to provide an area for a car to back up from these spaces. What Scott's asking us to do is to, you know, raise islands here, here and here, and the problem we see is that you do that and you won't be able to plow the snow out of these notches here, so what'll happen is that the plow is going to come down here and just push it all right at the end of these aisles, and you're going to end up with piles in these, these islands, so these, these, sorry, piles in these turnout areas, so the cars that are in here won't be able to use them. And you also, you know, have an issue here where you're going to have snow pushed up right against this walk, and it's going to be a problem to maintain. As we have it, the snow can be taken and pushed from here down this way and get you all the way down to the corner, so they can really stockpile their snow out over here and not have an issue of people coming in and parking here and trying to get over, or just not being able to utilize this back of the parking lot to park.
So my question to you then is, who's in charge of that snow removal there?
We are the.
You guys would be responsible for it? So you guys could talk to?
Yeah, we.
The snow people.
We manage the snow people.
All right, so you could talk to your landscaper and be like, hey, so that would be, that would be, that would be my, like, I obviously am speaking for myself, so if we did it Scott's way, you guys would just have to communicate to the snow removal people and say, hey, you can't block this area, or if you do, you have to shovel it out, or that kind of stuff. That would, that would be my.
I'm just not sure what the island's gain, you know.
Do you know what his reasoning was? Did he give a reason?
He thought it would be a better drainage pattern if we elevated those and had them all drain that one direction, there's a, there's a catch base in the corner of that.
And possibly not overcrowding the cars parking where they shouldn't.
He didn't mention that to me, no, I don't think that's in the report.
It also prevents the tractor trailer for truck from getting out.
It also prevents the tractor trailer for truck from getting out through the parking lot on the other side, right?
Uh, no. No, that's.
How's he gonna get in? Well, no, if he went straight through it, he came around through the backside and came over this way and bypassed all that stuff.
Isn't that, isn't there a barricade running all the way?
There's some sort of.
Yeah.
That would be. Where? Is this guy a rogue truck driver?
Thing, right, is a what's, what's in between the two parking lots right there? What are we looking?
That's a line. Yeah, there's an island, there's a curved island here.
There's a curved island right there.
Yeah.
So he's, he's gonna, we're gonna have more curbs that just stick out from here.
They needed a walkway to get through it.
So what he wants to put, what he wants to put.
He wants us to curb, basic, I don't know if he wants curbs, he wants these to be raised islands, landscape islands.
Landscape island.
Yeah. And honestly, even if they're landscaped and not curbed, they're not gonna last long, you know.
That's true.
I feel like I understand.
I understand both.
It's a giant parking lot, he's probably trying to just break it up, let some more drainage, you know.
My input on that is, the more obstacle you put in here, the harder it is for maneuverability for drivers. The obstacle for snow and all that, I'm more inclined to go with as design.
May just the Steiners indicated, as they said that they're responsible for the snow removal, that they would prefer to have it the original way as well, just, just.
Of course they would.
I think, I wasn't sure if that had gotten, that point had been made to you, but I just wanted.
Oh, no, I, I understand why they would prefer that.
Is any of that area currently gravel right now, or is it all concrete? Where the, where this is gonna go?
There's grass. I think this is actually a pavement line here, you can see that, this is grass.
So it is gonna pave, we are gonna pave over some more?
Yeah. But we are adding landscaping all through here.
It's hard to clean that up.
And we're adding the.
Smurg?
I see the point about the snow, I mean, it's convenient. It'd look a little nicer with the raised islands. Go either way on that one.
Right? Um, well, Dominic spoke already, he said he preferred the first one.
I'm in favor of the original design.
Yeah.
It really makes sense.
I wasn't trying to skip them, right?
Think about it, because you go to these parking lots sometimes, that are designed by engineers for maneuverability and then we come up and put obstacles in there and it creates a hazard.
Right?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the area itself right now doesn't have, you know, drainage right there, it's not, it's pavement, so.
Well, they have, you have a drainage. You have something.
Yeah, we're installing.
Catch basin?
Yeah, but I'm talking currently. Yeah, it's not, you know, we'd be.
Well, everything's spilling into that overflow, kinda.
So.
Building was gonna go.
I mean, you're adding two landscape things, it might look nice.
Technically have a curb right there, too.
Frankly, the people going to the walk-in probably don't care what it looks like, they're probably.
Anybody cares.
For an emergency.
Except for Leon.
I'm, I'm okay with it, I mean, you know, they are putting more kind of green area up front. So that's gonna be okay, it's gonna break up the parking lot a little bit.
I'm all right with it.
I agree. Commissioner Leon? Come on, get into it. You good? Rob?
I think the little plant makes some more sense.
I agree.
So just to be clear. You have a curb there, right? That's where that walkway is.
Yeah, there's a curb here in the middle.
So all that is gonna redirect any kind of water coming into the property to where you're gonna put your catch basin.
Yeah, this right here is the catch basin, so everything pitches this way and that drains it.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so I, for me, the islands, I mean, I do trust Scott's opinion.
It's possible to do it, we could.
For me, it just really doesn't make much sense in this scenario. Especially it's in a parking lot. Whatever you plant there. I heard, I'm sure our conservation committee's listening, but the native species going in there will, will probably get beat up a little bit, so. All right, what's next?
Hey, thank you. I don't, do you just want to touch upon the landscaping and the signage with the headlights at the pickup window?
Yeah, at the last hearing, there was some concern of the, I believe it was the traffic at the drive-through. Headlights there at night would be an issue or distraction to drivers that were coming down this way. So the landscape architect who could not be here this evening, so I'm gonna try to answer questions on that.
You're playing landscape architect tonight?
Trying.
All right. I'll play commissioner, you play. You play landscape architect and we'll figure it all out. That's beautiful.
Oh, it's turned around, there's trees off the other side.
What are those trees?
There we go. I was like, wait, it's herbs and a bunch of trees running in the middle of the parking lot?
So two things, we, you know, but before we even get to the landscaping, the owners actually sent, the Steiners sent us this photo that is also gonna contribute to the lights. This is the existing sign and what it looks like coming from that direction now, so that drive-up window is gonna be directly behind that sign, so you're gonna lose a lot of the light, you know, from that. It's not gonna block everything.
I don't want to be rude, but you're technically not driving where you're taking out.
That's correct, but it's the wrong.
If you're driving right there.
That's true.
You better call the cops, because you, you need more than coffee.
Yes, there's some issues.
Yeah, you're correct, but it will help contribute to blocking some of it.
Maybe. I'll give you a maybe on that one.
This was a convenient photo of the sign that.
That's definitely a convenient photo.
No, no, it's not to depict the, just to show that there is a sign.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
On 111, that's not blocking anything.
Looks enormous in that picture.
Yeah, you're definitely not driving right there. That's okay.
If we can get some more signage from you, that would be nice.
Easy now.
Just thought I'd slide that in.
Okay, so in addition to the sign.
Hey, listen, you could ask for whatever, right?
We also, or the landscape architect added a pretty extensive series of plantings along here. They're identified as shrubs, I'm not qualified to tell you what each species is or anything, but they're about three to five feet tall.
Are they, you don't know what they are?
Should show it.
They're on the, and I just, I don't know what.
He doesn't actually like know that, but they're on there.
Want to get that question, so I punted it to Jason.
It says plant list right there.
It was right to your right.
We're down, right there.
There you go.
IG. We have to go over and see what those. Elixis, compact inkberry. Two to three feet high is what the majority of them seem to be.
Number's right there, yeah.
Seventeen of those.
Now, two to three feet high is what you're planting?
Yes.
We don't know how high they get.
He said, he said they would be three to five feet high.
Maximum?
So that should block the.
When they're done growing?
Yes. And then there's also. India S G.
They're sitting down in the car. It's close enough.
SG is a switchgrass, so it's some sort of a tall grass.
Cantor.
Those die in the winter.
Yeah.
Grass is in winter?
Viburnium.
Yeah, that doesn't really help.
Viburnium.
Six months of the year and won't be there.
Viburnum. Craggins.
You putting switchgrass there?
We got a section of it behind the shrubs on the, on the parking lot side, so I think it's more of a decorative element than it is.
Yeah, but if the other shrub survives through the winter.
Yeah, what are the other shrubs again?
They were.
IGs.
IG is.
Inkberry.
I think berry.
Pink berry, right?
The inkberry lives through the winter and the other ones are just.
SG is the switchgrass.
Pink berry?
I thought it was.
Not familiar with the inkberry.
Do they live?
It's thirty-six.
Yeah.
Okay.
They look like they probably survived, you know.
Yeah, I have those, yeah, yeah, those, they do last, yeah.
What was that inkberry? Googled it, what about it? It looks like it survives through the winter.
Good job.
Yeah, it does. Inkberries on it.
So everybody has Googled it and everybody says it lives through the winter, that's just. All landscape.
He has them.
Just saying, we're all.
We were, we did ask him to plant them at screening, that would be year-round, so that was his intent, I assume that what he chose there would be a year-round.
How native are they to this area?
It appears that they're native.
They're not invasive?
That's pretty.
Okay.
Because they said it's a good substitute for another kind of plant to use.
Okay, I just want to make sure our butterflies and flies eat.
Don't quote me on that.
Google could be wrong. They're listening to you, Nicole.
They are.
Okay, so those, those get three to five feet in height. And they live throughout the winter, which is, which is obviously the key, because we want to make sure we screen some of those lights and all that kind of stuff, excellent.
Anybody have any more questions on?
Dominic, view the rest of the landscaping down along the side and stuff, just so we know that there's some more plants and stuff coming in, yeah. So that's gonna help screening, kind of.
He added plants along this, this frontage as well.
Side of the building and the drive-through, the front. I think it's gonna look nice.
Okay.
You have a pretty good buffer over here.
Mr. Smurgalino, any questions about the landscaping?
No, I'm good with that.
Mr. Paniccia?
That's good.
Mr. Condon? Mr. Ambrose?
You sure?
Yeah. Two thumbs up.
Nicole?
I like it.
Sure with that. And now let's get to the good stuff. I think the only thing left is the design of the building.
Yeah, I was gonna pull up the building plans. So this is the floor plan. Architect, the owner, someone who could speak to.
Thank you, feel out, oh, yeah.
Are you recording the elevations?
I think we're okay with the floor.
I don't think we've changed since last time, right?
I, I really can't speak to that, I don't know.
Michael, did you have to make any adjustments to the floor plan because of the, with the structure?
The only thing that we did do was we, there used to be the walk-in cooler on the far, it's not the interior, it was a walk-in cooler on the far left of the building that we had to move, but the actual floor plan, no. We just moved the, the location of the walk-in cooler, so nothing changed on the inside. It just kind of, it made the building look a little bit better from the, from looking at the drive-through side of the building.
Staff, okay with that?
Yeah.
Everybody on board with that?
The cooler, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Next?
I'm swum. This is the, this is the elevation that.
He's still waiting.
Discussion on last, last store round.
So to be clear, this is what's facing Route 111.
What you see from the McDonald's parking lot.
So if I'm standing at McDonald's and I'm looking across at this building, this is what I see.
Yeah, I mean, if you're directly on it, I think you probably.
With landscaping in front of it, obviously.
Yeah. The landscaping's gonna break up a lot.
I, just talking about the building.
Let's go.
So that's from 111?
That's your view from 111, that's from. So previously, just to be clear, so the where that brown peak is, was a a flat roof with a fence.
Right.
And that Dunkin' sign was not there either.
Was the fence blocking utilities before?
Yes, it was blocking HVAC, it's Michael, I apologize.
On the, on the flat roof.
On the roof, yes.
So now those are on the back.
On the other side.
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's a big.
That's a big plus.
Well, if I could just say, as I went back to architect after our last meeting, I introduced first, from the right, working right to left, we added the sign, the, the peak is still the same peak that it was size-wise, we added the Dunkin' sign, calling that out there. Then we removed, as the board member said, we removed the fence, the white fence that had the HVAC and just flipped that to the other side and added that peak above the drive-through window to give more of an architectural appeal, and then we added the third window to the left to break up that panel, that, that, that side from the drive-through pickup window to the end of the building, to try to give it a little bit more symmetry as you look at the building from the streets.
To be clear, the, the two windows on the right are the actual drive-through windows, the other one is just a aesthetic window.
That's correct.
Okay.
Let's, anything else about?
No, no, sir.
I just have one question, as I see the facade, is that, is that how it's gonna look? I mean, color-wise?
Three colors, yeah.
Michael, are those the colors, the question?
Yes, the board member's correct, those are the colors. Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'd like to see that. Uh, Donald Smurgalino?
All right, I definitely liked what you guys revised. Not to be too nitpicky, but, you know, this is in the center of town and we're gonna be driving by a lot. That last window, it's just kind of bugging me that it's all the way to the right. I know you got mechanicals and all your cooking stuff back there, but how difficult would that be to center it? Or make it a little bit more eye-pleasing or bigger?
Problem there is that I even you know, went back and forth with the idea of adding a second window, but customers could be confused and I need that space as far to the end of the building, so in the event that you pull a car through or a bigger SUV, it doesn't block the drive-through window behind it. So that's why we, we go as far to the far right of that building as you look at it as possible.
Makes sense. I see where you're coming from though, Doc.
Yeah.
Probably such a functional window as opposed to a, it's not there for lots of.
The problem, the problem is, the problem is, right now, you're the only one who notices that window. I mean, I'm not trying to be rude, it's like, it's one of those things that like, it may be big to you, but most people aren't gonna notice that window. But you're right, though, it's not, it's not centered with that wall and, but I don't know how they have to redesign the whole inside to move that window. Makes it a little difficult to. But I totally understand where it comes from. Anything else, bud? Mr. Condon? He already went. He went first.
I'm, I'm okay with it.
He went first, he said one question and he went. I don't skip him on purpose.
It just seems like a pattern, I'd say.
He goes first for some reason instead of second, so we skip him.
Thank you. I, I'm okay with it, I, I thank you guys for, you know, making the little tweaks for us and I guess we'll talk about the other side too. Or I'll bring it up, I see that you added something on the southerly facing, so what you'll actually see when you're driving up 111. I, you know, I love that it says Monroe. I think that's pretty cool. That's about it, I'm good with it.
Leon? On the windows. Because they're so squared off, can you round the tops of the windows? Make them look a little bit more, give them an eyebrow? Give them something, you gotta, you gotta make them look a little bit more, they just look like the back of a house windows.
Round up?
I can't picture that. An eyebrow, it's just, it's just a rounded, like, half moon? Yes, but smaller. It would just go over the top of the. Make it have a little bit more curb appeal. It does. I got square. And then the lighting, what kind of lighting you can have on those side corners?
If I could interject, those, the old-style awnings we no longer use, most brands are using, that's what they call like a blade. The awnings are over those windows, they're illuminated. And they are, I believe they're stainless steel or aluminum. They already have lights in them. They're not that fabric awning that fades, so these are are height, you know, spaced at a certain distance above to provide the light and everything for the people in the car, so I don't know what really can be done with those. It's not, they're kind of designed for maximum effect for the people in the cars.
Designed for what?
Well, with, with, at a certain height above those windows, they're, with the light, they're not, you know, they're LEDs, but they are designed for, you know, soft light, but also to aid the customers, you know, getting the stuff through the window.
By putting something on top of the windows is gonna affect the lighting?
Well, you probably would have to bump those higher in, in, in some ways. I mean, those are mechanical windows that open and close, so I don't, I don't know if, if that's a possibility. Could possibly ask, but they're, again, they're, they're staged at a certain height above the window.
Why would you have to move the window up? Yeah, so I'm saying, I don't understand all that.
What you could do is
You don't have to move the.
Above the window, there's a unit that it's detached, it's just a, a little trim over it. You could do it.
Yes. It's just a small eyebrow over the window. The window doesn't have to be moved at all.
Zero.
You're not asking, it could be a separate component to the window.
Michael, I think the question is at the top of the windows, both delivery windows, it seems that there's a rectangle.
No, above that, above the rectangle.
To add a feature.
Yes.
I was wondering if you could just make that part of the window and take the rectangle and round it off.
They sell windows with an eyebrow built into it and you just install the whole.
It's not a mechanical opening.
They sell the mechanical ones, yeah.
May not.
That's the problem. But then they also sell separate units.
Yeah, they could have a separate window above possibly.
Separate unit that just by itself, you would put it on top.
Okay.
Maybe the architect can explore something to submit to staff.
Are, are we talking above all three windows or just above the two drive-through windows?
Well, I don't even know. Why, why do you have the other window there?
Break it up.
Break it up.
Just to break it up.
That's, one of the comments was that do something with that wall, other, otherwise it wouldn't be there.
Right.
That was added per the comments.
We just want to have a little bit better curb appeal back, those windows, you're gonna see those windows all day long. So you do something like to make it a little bit, I don't know, architect or view board even. Yeah, I'm still baffled by, I'm still baffled by that too. I'm baffled about that.
But a reminder that there is gonna be a, a whole landscape.
No, I have that. I have that. This is, this is something that fitting in there usually. If it was a drive-through, I would want it behind, okay? And I understand that this is a tight area over here, but we're just trying to accommodate. Make it look good. And that's, that's what it's, it's coming down to, you get what I mean? Because usually I know you don't have the room there. I know you can't do it the other way. But for, for me, I would prefer it to be behind the building. Because the building would be set back further, it'd be a little bit better curb appeal, you could do a little bit better landscaping, you could do a bunch of other stuff over there. And so I understand that this is the only way it's gonna work here because of the way you have to get in and out. Otherwise, you'd have to put another driveway in there. And I don't think, you don't want to put another driveway and that's the reason why you're doing this drive-through this way is because distinct, you're gonna have to widen the road, you're gonna have to do a lot of work, right? That turns into be a big expense. And that's the only reason why this drive-through is going this way. I could tell you that right now because I already know that, I don't know how many other commissioners know, but basically you would have to put another exit out there with that drive-through. So that's why this design is the way it is.
You know, tomorrow morning, I'll just you know, how big a piece like that is wise in, in what can be added and.
It's almost like this.
Lee, anything else, bud?
You're basically talking, introducing a window, almost like twenty of here, on top of this existing window.
Better.
And they, and they come up here.
We can certainly, I'm sorry, but
Oh, yeah.
That's something we can certainly look into if the commission were to see fit to approve it. That could be a condition and we can work with staff and the commission. Look into that for you.
Okey-dokey.
Michael, is that fair?
Yeah, it's, it's very fair.
Commissioner.
Thank you.
All right. I, I, I don't hate it. I'm just a little underwhelmed with it. I think a window change, if it offers any level of functional difficulty, I would be inclined to leave that alone because I don't want to change up the way the business is being run in there. But what I would like is to see on the left side of the, the roof line is something like a cupola or something up there, something on that roof line to, to give it a little bit of architectural appeal. I don't, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be a design change on the framing, but maybe a, a structure on the roof that can be added. You know, and I think it would, it would go a long way. I mean, I'm you know, I'm trying to vision what it would look like. I just, I, you know.
If, if you don't mind, on that left side, even if you did like a false dormer.
That's what I'm talking, or the false dormer or a cupola, the same type of thing.
Or if you do like, like they do in the, I, I know it's a little bit more framing and stuff and probably not gonna want to get into it. It's a little crazy, but if you did like what they do at the back of capes and they lift them up a little bit, just to give it a little. I know that's a little, yeah, a little raised structure there, but definitely something over there.
And I don't want to get too picky. I don't want this to hold you guys up either, but I, I do think that for, for a nominal design change, you could add a lot of curb appeal with that left side of the, of the roof. And I think your eye would leave those windows and go up there and everything would be fine. My thoughts, that's it.
Anything else? Nicole?
I agree. I mean, I didn't, I wasn't here for the last meeting, but I saw the previous design. I do I'm, I'm feeling like Mr. Westlem is a little underwhelmed and I'm actually Googling other Dunkin' Donuts to see what other ideas, others ones use to break it up. I agree, that's a dormer idea, just something to make it look a little more I don't even know the word I'm looking for. Either the, the eyebrow over the window or the cupola or, and I see, you know, some Dunkins have like the stone as, as a breakup thing to break that up. I don't know if we could incorporate stone work somewhere out there. I may pick myself, but is there any opportunity to put another sign on the building or is that a touchy subject?
It only meets certain requirement, right?
That's, okay.
Uh, we couldn't get like that cup of coffee sign that you have in that brown dormer at the top over there? You meet your requirement already? Are you signed on the other side facing the medical building?
Yeah, if, if I can interject there, what we did was that we, to add that sign after the last meeting, we shrunk everything to make sure that we were at the maximum amount of signage per square foot and everything. So right now we are at, we are at capacity and, and as it comes to the sign.
Signage, I think the signage is, is fine. I just think you need a little architectural enhancement on that roof line and it would be fine. I, my thought.
Nicole, you had screams.
I'm good. I just, yeah, I mean, I, I don't want to hold up the process either. I, I just wish it was a little more visually. Do you have a picture of it with all the landscaping? To kind of get an idea of what it would look like all put together?
You're an architect, right?
Okay, rendering, yeah. Okay.
I, so you're all set?
I'm all set.
With trying to get something into that, that space, a false dormer, a cupola, something over there. Are you gonna go with clapboard siding on this entire building?
I believe that's hardy board, hardy board siding.
All right, okay, but the clapboard style?
And there's, there's, the stonework is on the bottom there as well.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right. I couldn't tell that was stonework or a wall.
It's stonework.
It's my forty, twenty-year-old eyes. Thank you.
Would, I don't know, just where that, where that, your first drive-up win, not the, well, I guess the middle drive-up window where the brown is? Would, I don't know, this is just my thinking outside the box. Would you guys go to like a shake-style hardy siding there instead of just something a little bit different? Break it up a little bit? I mean, I'm sure you're not gonna want, like, I mean, personally, I see it as like stone being there, like you wrap that stone up there, makes, makes it look totally different, would change, would change a lot of the look, but if you guys, I know that's a big expense. My thought process is if, if you break it up with a hardy, a hardy shake over there would, would make it look a little bit better? I don't know how the rest of the commission feels about that. I mean, I would love to see that, that veneer stone going up in there. I think that would be
I think so too.
That would be absolutely stunning. With a little dormer on that left side, it would be, I think it would be absolute beautiful gateway to the to the town, but that's kind of where I stand. I would like to see those two things. But I don't know where the rest of the commission stands on it. On that. I don't think it comes down to because we would have to get them to agree to it. And we can't, we can't, you know, we can't require them to do that, right?
No, you can encourage them.
We can encourage them to do that. And so they would have to agree to do that and it wouldn't be, you know, we'd have to be, we'd have to discuss that with them in order for them to make those changes. As far as, not even as far as approval, but to help us get to an approval to make it look like a little bit of curb appeal. Yeah, I definitely think this design's better than the first go-around.
Yeah.
That first go-around was But we think, but I think the most, I think most of the commission is in agreement that It's better. You gotta, it's better, but you need to give us a little bit more.
And I, I like the idea of the stone as well with a, a dormer or a, a cupola on the left. I think that would look great.
That veneer stone?
Yeah.
Awesome. That metal wall, it's just me. Or even if you went to a shake-hardy siding, something a little bit different to break it up. That's where I stand. I don't have, any other commissioners have any other questions?
All these suggestions are very good. I mean, it's up to you. It might be more costly, but then at the end run, it's more beneficial to just stand out business and maybe attract more people.
They're the most beautiful buildings. Rick, you have anything?
No, I, I've incorporated all your comments.
Okay. So you have something? Well, I haven't gotten to that point yet. I was about to get to that, so, okay. So we've given you guys some suggestions. My next question to you is what do you want to do? Do you want to close this meeting and? Or do you want to keep it open and make some more changes?
Chairman, we have to open it up to the public still.
Yeah, we do.
Sorry.
If I, just one other comment, I don't want to just sidetrack, but before we were to close, another issue was I, I don't know, Michael, if you have any comments on the cupola or any, anything that the commission has indicated. I mean, obviously the goal would be if we could close tonight, that would be the preferred.
Right. I guess what I, I want to do is I, I'm not as familiar with the, the hardy pla, like, the hardy backer, I, I understand. But if we were to, what I'm understanding from the board is that the piece that juts out, the, the brown piece and go, instead of a board, go with more of a shingle look, is that what? Is that what the board's requesting? And I would just want to make sure that that's a doable thing with the architect and the brand.
I, I, I suggested the shake in that section as well as possibly just this, whatever stone you're using on that wall, on the foundation to go up that section as well.
What's shake, Mr. Chairman? I just, I don't.
You never saw like, you ever?
I'm sure I've seen it, I just.
It's just individual pieces of wood, but they, in hardy, in hardy, they make it in a panel that just looks, do you ever see the cedar impressions for vinyl siding? It looks like?
I have that on my house.
Yeah, so correct, kind of like that.
Looks like a cedar shake.
Right. But hardy makes it in a panel.
It's maintenance-free.
Hardy makes it in a panel, so instead of like where you would do it with wood and put every individual piece in, hardy makes it in a panel and you just slide the panel in, nail it off. So again, it's, right, there's, there's minimal maintenance.
To be clear, this is what the area you were talking about is, right?
Correct. That would be just something subtle to change it. I mean, a, a big wow factor I think would be the, the, the stone going up there, but that's you know. Again, I'm not building the building, so I don't know where we're going.
Also, you know, the brand also has control over it too, so I don't know that it's totally within.
Yeah, but I've seen Dunkin' Donuts with, with stone going up, upside walls and stuff like that too, so. So, yes, shake or stone in that section. A cupola or dormer in that left-hand corner where that left window is, yeah, somewhere in there.
Makes me think a dormer, like you said, may even be nicer.
A dormer would look awesome. You could do a million things with it, but.
Michael?
Yeah, cupola or dormer or something. A cupola would obviously go on the ridge, but a dormer, a false dormer right there, you know, where you're not really doing anything structural, you're not using it other than just aesthetics.
I would agree. I think, I think the dormer is, is, is pretty easy for us to add there.
That's, yeah.
That's an easy thing to add. It's, as you said, there's, there's really no attic there. It's just, it's just a false dormer and it will enhance the visual aspect of it. So I can, I can go back on that because I think that's a pretty simple one for me to add there. And as I promised you, the other items, I'll, I'll just have to ask, I'll ask on the the, the piece above the, the transom, is that called a transom? I apologize. Above the window, is that called a transom?
I believe so.
The triangle?
The architectural feature above.
Talking about the circle window, which I've never seen a circle drive-through window. I'm totally okay with the square ones.
Yeah.
Never once seen a rounded top drive-through window.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. I don't, I mean, for me, it doesn't matter either.
Cars are gonna be in the way, trees are gonna be.
Yeah, for me, for, for me, I'm not so concerned about the windows more so than the, the false dormer and then the either the shake in that brown area or the, or the stone going up in that area.
Colors are gonna break that up in the center. I mean, it's gonna be orange.
I understand.
Orange or is it brown?
Looking at, right, but you're just looking at straight lines now going.
Well, I mean.
All you see is straight lines.
It won't be that, it won't be that orange.
But right, when you look at that, you see straight lines.
Yeah.
So it's not broken up at all. Just because it's protruding a little bit, doesn't break it up. If you put a shake there or stone there, that breaks it up because it's a totally different look. The stone would look phenomenal, but
It doesn't look like the other buildings in the area if you start throwing, I mean, the stone would.
Well, if you want it to look like the other buildings in the area, we gotta get red bricks and that would look, that would look horrible.
Well.
If I could ask one question, I apologize for interrupting. If we were to put a dormer there just for giving me direction, would you want, obviously it's gonna have a window, but would the dormer be the brown? Would you look for it to be the brown color going horizontal or would you?
On the right.
Or what?
Probably the white. White with just a square window in it? It'd be fine. It's more about the dormer than the actual color and the
I think the white would look great.
More, more about breaking up that, just that open space right there.
To the left.
To the left, right, where it says dormer.
Right, dormer, right there, right. I mean, and again, I, I think that's a pretty simple add-on on our part, provided that, you know, the architect says yes.
Subject to the architect or Dunkin' Donuts saying yes to
I make a suggestion.
Certainly do that.
We're just giving you a suggestion. Otherwise, it would be like a committee drawing a horse and ending up on a camel. It's up to the architect to put all these things together.
Yes, I, I, I agree with that, sir, but I just, I just want to try to give them the best direction from the board, you know what I mean? Because the color, then back and forth, you're probably gonna ask for this and within a couple days' time and I, I just want to make sure I give them the right, the right direction. So I mean, if we say white direction, I, I, and I do that, that's, that's just probably one less question you have to ask.
Any other questions? We're gonna ask the, we're gonna ask anybody online in favor or against?
Before the, because we do public, then we come back to you for closing.
So is there anybody in the public online or, well, there's nobody here, so. Anybody online that wants to speak in favor or against? Not everybody at once, no. All right. Anything else?
At the last hearing, there was a question that Chris just reminded me of. Yeah, with the parking along the
We had looked into eliminating those six spaces.
I know, yeah, I noticed.
Early side and that would just be a problem. It's probably where the employees would, would go for the most part, but then we'd have to the availability of the off-site isn't necessarily there either, but, so we were hoping that we could leave those six there.
Yeah, I, I thought about it. I am, I am okay with them.
You want to leave?
The fact that they're angled is gonna help and yeah, it is what it is. I, I just won't park there if I go.
You want to leave that and then come up, bring it up in deliberation?
Park at People's Bank and walk over. Anything else?
Thank you very much.
So what would you like to do? Would you like to close the meeting or would you like to work on that and come back to us and?
I think if the commission were to see fit to, and I don't know if professional staff, if Rick could draft something, but if we would be, I think you've heard from Mr. Gavalo that that, you know, the dormer and then he'll look into the other items. If that could, those could be conditions of approval, we can work with staff and get it, get that back to you and then if you were to see fit to approve it, then you could, the special permit and the site plan, so to speak. That, that could be a condition, I think. Is fair to say, Michael?
Very fair, yes.
Michael's not here, it's always tough. And your client is like in a different location.
I mean, just speaking for myself, I'd be more comfortable not closing it and you doing, you're doing a drawing real quick and next meeting, I mean, everything's been answered. Really just looking at those two things and we can close it next meeting and, and Rick could write it up and have you an approval in in a couple weeks, so. That would be my, leave it open, but I don't know, what, what do you guys think? Ryan? No, they get skipped. Yeah, Nicole's getting skipped.
Um, I'm okay with
Actually, no.
No, we're not deliberating yet, so.
What do you guys want to do? Leave it open? Leave it open, see it?
I, I mean, I'd be okay, to be fully honest, I'd be okay closing it and approving it as is, so. All right. All right.
Lee?
Open.
Open. I would say leave it open. Rob? Nicole?
I'm fine closing it, but I see the purpose in keeping it open.
Okay, so it's gonna stay open until next meeting, or next, whenever you guys get the drawings in, submit everything, and then we'll get you on the agenda ASAP. Thanks, guys.
As soon as we can. Thank you very much.
Excellent.
You have a nice evening.
Good night, guys.
Okay. Uh, section C subdivision site development plan review, there are none.
They're ready to go.
Uh, we're gonna deliberations, determinations?
None, Mr. Chairman?
We don't have any? New applications? Uh, what do we got here? Rick?
Okay, as reported at the last meeting, the commission now has to do the map amendment. Routes 25, 11, and 34. Staff gave you a copy, uh, of larger scale, 11 by 17.
All right.
And at the same, we will have the petition for our first PD for the luxury apartments, 127 Main Street. So in terms of sequencing, the commission will, uh, introduce the map amendment to the public, identifying those areas as identified in the text amendment. Now we have to put it on the map. And the property owner of 127 Main Street is finishing up the regrading there, wants to proceed with their proposal on the luxury apartments. So we have a lot on the plate in, in March. Uh, we have the open space plan, uh, on the third. We're gonna finish up with, uh, Dunkin' Donuts on the third, and we have the app out on the third. Those four zoning items.
It's also Leon's birthday.
It's also Leon's birthday, March 3rd.
We'll bring a cake.
Oh, now you gotta come. That sucks.
Cheesecake?
Also, still can't read the rubens on this map.
Yeah, I gotta clarify it.
So you have to have-
Central cog is helping with the mapping.
We have to have a public hearing on this change?
Oh, absolutely.
Right, so.
How wide is this bucket?
1,500 feet from the edge of the state right away, in. And every property has to have direct access to those state highways. So you can't have a rear lot, you know, access from another street. It's gotta have direct access. So staff will go over all the criteria again, just to refresh you on that.
And that's, uh, all right, so.
That's gonna be on the 17th.
March 7th.
Two items on March 7th.
17th?
Yeah. So a lot of public hearings in March.
So that takes care of both?
Both of those, yep.
Both of those? All right, so E is taken care of. Uh, pending meeting minutes, January 6th. Everybody get a chance to look at them?
Make a motion to approve January 6th meeting minutes as drafted.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any, Thomas Smirglio?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hey, shut up, Bobby.
Hey, get your book, get your, get it in, kid. Any discussion?
No.
Call the roll?
It's a brilliant guess.
Condon, yes.
Rosie, yes.
Mayne, yes.
Excellent, yes.
Uh, January 20th. Meeting minutes. Need a motion?
Motion?
Dominic.
Motion what?
Motion to approve.
To accept the meeting minutes as drafted?
Second.
Well done. Uh, we have a motion, we have two seconds. Any, uh, any discussion?
Uh, other than it's really hot in here?
Oh, my, it is, right?
I, it's the warmest it's been since I've been here.
Open the windows? I was thinking about it.
All right, any discussion on the meeting minutes?
No.
No?
No.
Call the roll?
Smirglio, yes.
Condon, yes.
Rosie, yes.
Mayne, yes.
Excellent, yes.
Minutes have been approved. All right.
Are you voting yes, by the way, for the record?
I said yes.
Oh, did you? I said Mayne, yes.
Feel free to listen at any point in the thing. It's not a, it's really not a problem. Take your time. Take your time. Pay attention to what's going on, it's okay. Okay, I, I have been speaking.
About two grand to heat this up.
No wonder why our budget's going up next month. Um, zoning, and here comes the fun stuff. Rick, talk to me.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we have tonight Rob McCarthy. Rob, if you wanna?
Yes, hello. This is Rob McCarthy.
Yeah, Rob has prepared a scope of services. This went before the Inland Wetlands Commission at their last meeting. It was determined to break it into three tasks. You have the draft in front of you. Task number one is the soil excavation oversight, and that falls under the Planning and Zoning Commission. Task number two, backfilling and grave restoration, also under the Planning and Zoning. And task three, well and wetland restoration monitoring. That's the Inland Wetlands Commission.
Okay.
So tonight, uh, Rob wants to identify himself. We did have four firms in the beginning. One had a conflict, two dropped out, and EnSafe wishes to proceed, and Rob is here tonight to say hello, introduce his firm, and talk a little bit about the, uh, uh, services provided. Go ahead, Rob.
Um, okay, so, yeah, my name's Rob McCarthy. I'm with EnSafe, uh, licensed environmental professional in Connecticut. I'm also a professional engineer in Connecticut, um, and, you know, I've been working in the state of Connecticut predominantly for my career for about 30 years now, um, largely just in investigation remediation type projects. Remediation is included, everything from, you know, digging hall projects to, to institute injections and other types of things, but pretty familiar with, uh, excavations and, and moving lots of soil too. So, uh, you know, the scope of the project, we're still learning about it at this time, um, you know, but, but getting our hands around what, what it's gonna entail. Um, so we do have, you know, other staff in Connecticut as well, out of our Weathersfield office, that are, you know, the proposal's based on having one of our junior staff able to do a lot of the inspection work and be at the site, if, you know, there's many days that are needed to, to be there for this removal portion of it. Um, you know, I'd be providing oversight, but, uh, be able to have someone that's at a little lower rate than me to be able to do a, a chunk of the work, so. I guess, do you have any questions at this time, or?
Staff also wants to advise the commission in Monroe, we have a threshold of $50,000. If it goes beyond that, you gotta get into a bidding. That is really gonna tie it up, so we're trying to hold it under the 50,000. We really believe we can do so. Now, as the commission is aware, the first phase is gonna be the excavation of the former high school to remove the portions that are unacceptable as clean fill. The property owner indicated he will do that voluntarily, because that was a, a request, and the commission said, uh, we're not going to impose that as a condition. The property owner indicated he's gonna do that as the first task. Uh, we anticipate that not to take long, because the proper equipment will be there to excavate, to sort, et cetera. We're anticipating just a, a couple of weeks. What we also want to build into this, uh, agreement is that both the Wetlands Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission need to revisit this contract, because if things go very quickly and smoothly, and remember, you're gonna, we're gonna have weekly, uh, inspections and, and monthly reports, not only from an LEP, but from the project engineer as well, you may decide to make some, uh, changes down the road. I believe six months, uh, makes sense for this project, unless the commission wants to do it sooner. I would not recommend pushing it out any further. So, this is a work in progress. Uh, staff wants to hold it under 50,000 for the obvious reason, so we don't have to do the bidding process. Uh, Inland Wetlands feels more comfortable separating the tasks. So this commission has the first two, as reported. The wetlands is the well monitoring and the restoration to bring back, uh, uh, the wetlands. So, we, you know, if you have any questions of Rob, he'll take him about his background, uh, how he anticipates this being reviewed, uh, any what-ifs, if something should arise, you may want to ask him questions. If not, we are gonna continue. This is not gonna go be tweaked again, because the wetlands has not seen this version yet. Uh, this version is a result of the wetlands recommendation. So I, I think, uh, hopefully, the commission feels comfortable with the three tasks, the first two being P and C, the third being wetlands. Uh, it will then go back to the next wetlands meeting, and then we'll come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I have some questions. I don't know if anybody-
Uh, what do I do?
Well, no questions, no.
I want to talk.
All right, uh, let's, uh, start with Commissioner Smirglio. Any questions for Rob?
Not at this time.
Commissioner Panichia?
Yeah, I have, uh, one, two questions. How are you gonna approach the monitoring and then reporting?
And so monitoring just meaning the oversight of the excavation work that, and/or the backfilling work that's gonna be conducted?
Yeah, I mean, are you gonna be?
Yeah, so, you know, our plan would be to have someone able to be there, you know, whatever frequency we all agree upon. If it's, you know, once a week for, you know, a day or part of a day, you know, they can see what's actually coming into the site, you know, what the material is, what it looks like, is it consistent with what, you know, the documents are that are gonna be required of the, the owner to even receive the material? And I don't know all the details yet of the, you know, the plan for acceptance of material, but, you know, I've heard a little bit about, you know, they're, they're gonna require some analytical data, you know, and things of that nature, and so, you know, we'll also request to get a look at any of that, you know, documentation that they're receiving, so that we can make sure that it's consistent with what they're telling you, either in their monthly reports or however they're, uh, you know, relaying the information to you as well. Yeah, so we'll keep a close eye on what is actually going in, what the documentation looks like, because that's just as important really as, you know, as the physical material too, so, you know, so that everything will be done properly and per your approvals and requirements.
Are you gonna give them an outline on how to approach and how to handle it, or are they gonna give it to you?
And, you know, we can certainly outline most of what I just said. Um, I just, I, we haven't actually seen a lot of the documents that are gonna be involved, so we're not completely familiar with what we are gonna have to do ultimately, you know, every little piece of it. Um, and it's just because we haven't had a chance to, you know, to receive all those documents and get a look yet.
I'm talking about the approach on remedying it. Are they gonna follow your schedule or directions, or are they gonna prepare a schedule and they're gonna, you're gonna monitor?
And by remedy, you mean the wetland portion, or just the actual filling of the, of the quarry, or, or the material that's coming out?
The overall.
Hey, you know, we're gonna follow whatever they're doing, um, you know, and what their plan is, and, but we'll be able to keep an eye on it, and that if, you know, if it's straying from what their plans are, because you've already, you've got all their plans and what you've approved for them to do, and, you know, and we'll be able to look at those plans and, and compare to what's going on out at the site.
Thank you.
Ryan?
Uh, my only question for now is just, I have, uh, the agreement for environmental or, uh, remediation services. Is it, I only have pages one through nine. Am I missing pages? Is, and it says nine of 13. Just maybe more of a question for Rick.
Yeah, I'll check that. Maybe that-
Hey, I think it's funny.
See, I don't have the last item.
No, this is the same, right?
Same one.
Two of nine, 13, eight down there in the five frame.
I don't, I don't know, I mean, maybe it's the other pages are just blank and, um, just want to make sure.
Yeah, and it's a pieced-together PDF from a few different documents, and so I need to try and pull it up and see what.
Okay, just want to make sure I'm not losing anything vital on those tapes, but, um-
Mr. Chairman, there's a lot of moving parts. Uh, the purpose of tonight, like to the Wetlands Commission, introduce the firm, the, the lead LEP, uh, what they're capable of doing, and now it's time to fine-tune it, the hours and the number of days per week, all those are being worked on. So this is a work in progress, but I wanted Rob to introduce himself, put a face to the, to the firm.
Right, but I want him to be aware of what we're looking for.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. So now I'm gonna get into the, the real meat of it now. But I, I wanted to show you the three tasks. That's what the preference is by the wetlands. Separate the two tasks by P and C. And then we have to quantify each of those three tasks.
We'll take a five-minute break just so I can kind of look over this.
Sure.
We're gonna take five minutes. It's-
I'll read those quick.
8:29.
Bang again.
8:37, we're back. Uh, where did we leave off? I apologize.
Ryan, you were good? Did you have questions? I just have my questions around the missing pages for now, and then I believe, sorry. We wanted some reading time down there.
I'm good now.
You're good?
Yeah, thank you.
Leon?
Yeah, I had some. On the, on the scope of the work, Rob, um, they have to remove material that they already have in the ground from Stratford High School, which I think, I don't know what we calculated out as 60,000 yards, maybe, it's a difference. We don't know how much is in there. How long is that process gonna take to make sure? We don't even know what that material really is or what it consists of. So would you do testing on that material, or how would that go about?
So from our assumptions, and that was our task one, essentially, that, you know, we could have someone there to observe, you know, what's coming out. We had, we did not intend to do any testing, um, and again, don't really know what the scope is for, you know, the actual owner, if they were gonna test things as, as they're coming out or leaving the site, um, and so we'd have to learn a little more about that. And that's where, you know, our scope, it's kind of fluid in that, you know, there's a lot of unknown still, I think, as far as exactly what we really have to do, because, you know, the owner's gonna do the majority of the work, and they've got a consultant also, you know, and we're just kind of looking over their shoulder and making sure they're doing things right. Yeah, so, we, you know, we can have someone there, and then, you know, depending also on the budgetary constraints, you know, we can modify how frequent we're there, whether it's, you know, every day of the week or every other day, you know, and, and just trying to keep an eye on what's coming out and, and what does need to be done, you know, on your behalf.
Well, basically, what's in the, what's in the ground now has to come out and be processed. And whatever, which they have, they have cement in there with rebar sticking out of it and stuff like that, and so, and there's some asphalt in there, and I, we don't even know what else is in there, because we really don't, I mean, we didn't get all the documents, and obviously, you didn't get any documents either, right? From what's in that site.
Right, we don't have any of the documents at all.
And so, I mean, so, well, as far as this approval, we, they're, they're only supposed to bring in clean fill. And so, basically, um, after they do the excavating of what's in the ground, basically, nothing should be leaving the site, because they're bringing only in clean fill. And so, and they're supposed to either process it and put it in the ground, but there's not supposed to be anything else leaving the site. And so they said they're gonna bring in certified clean fill, no asphalt, not gonna bring any asphalt in. And so I know if you were aware of this whole scope of what was required by this commission.
Aware to the point that, yes, there's material coming out, we understand that, and then, yes, a very large amount of material going in. You know, and it's the certified clean fill that obviously, you know, would be of, of great interest to confirm how they're gonna certify it, you know, what level of, you know, data and detail they're requesting from anybody who's bringing this material in, what frequency based on either, you know, cubic yards or tonnage, you know, and all those things that, you know, I, I don't know those details yet, but those are things that we would certainly want to know as part of, you know, our- but those are things that we would certainly want to know as part of, you know, our oversight and be able to, to pay attention to what is being done at the site and their documents.
So you don't know, you, you didn't give it, give them?
That's the next step we're starting tomorrow.
What's that?
All the relevant information.
All the relevant, so he doesn't have, you don't have any of that information? So my only concern is, is that we want to make sure that what comes in there is clean. We're not going to recycle it and make it clean on the site because we're not a recycling facility and we're not doing that. We don't have, our regulations don't allow for that. So we're basically saying that what you're going to bring in is going to be clean fill that's going to go in the ground. If for some reason they have to, you know, crush cement or something like that to compact it, that's one thing. But we don't want them bringing in cement, taking the rebar out of it, taking the metal out of it and sorting it and everything like that, and then removing that material off the site. That's, that's, this only, this only applies to what they have in the ground that we want to clean up before it goes in the ground. Well, they already have it in the ground, they have to dig it back out. But that's what we're concerned about. And then the other thing is, would you recommend, is there any more monitoring wells that we should put in this site or anything like that? Or, I mean, because we don't know that. I mean, I know there's a couple there. Have you looked at the site? Have you been to the site?
I, I did not get a chance to go to the site. I was going to actually stop in town hall last week and I ended up having to quarantine for most of the last week. So I haven't been able to get out and about for the last week. But, you know, that's certainly our next step is to get a look at it. I understand, yeah, you know, there were some hydro geological reports done a year and a half or so ago. We haven't seen those yet either. So, you know, those are all things we would want to get a quick look at and, you know, and be able to make some recommendations if needed.
Right, and that's, and that's, I think, what most of us are looking for is, is the scope of what you think is what you're going to do to do this. I mean, and, you know, I know that Rick talks about trying to keep it under 50,000 cap, but that's really, I, that's not my concern. I mean, if we have to bid it out, we have to bid it out. But the problem is, is that we want to make sure that what goes in that hole is not going to contaminate the water site because that's a G A A water site. That's my main concern. I don't know about the rest of these commissioners, but that's what my main concern is. And so that's why I want to know if you were aware of the whole scope of what, what we really wanted. Basically, when, when, after that hole gets dug out, whatever they got in there, basically nothing is supposed to be leaving the site. Everything that's coming in is supposed to stay there. So it's not, there's, they said they're bringing in certified clean fill, which I don't know how they're certifying it. But basically that they stated in a public meeting that they're going to bring in certified clean fill. And they're not going to bring any asphalt in. So I don't know how you would go about that protocol, but if it doesn't meet what we require, then the operation would have to be shut down. But that's what I have to say for now.
Yeah, Bruno. Rob?
Um, you know, due, due to the nature of, 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 this is a high profile area in town. And, and, and there's been a magnifying glass on this area for, for over 10 years now. And we're just now getting to the end. And, you know, as Leon said, you know, we don't want to wash down this process. You know, there, there's, you know, budgetary constraints possible, possibly, but we, we don't want to wash it down. We need to be, you know, we need to make sure the residents of the town that we represent are completely comfortable with the fact that this is a, you know, a very safe site for future development. And, you know, whatever has to happen has to happen as far as testing. I mean, we don't want to overdo anything, of course, but we do want to make sure that when that stuff comes out, that, that it gets, it gets looked at. And, and like Leon said, whatever's coming in, there needs to be a protocol set up so that everybody's on the same page and we don't fall back into the same process that, that got us into this mess. So, I mean, I, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm surprised you haven't been to the site at this point. And obviously this is a meeting greet, but I think that, you know, I appreciate you, you coming on tonight. But I think we would like to talk with you more after you get some more information and a, and a good scope of, of, of work.
Okay.
And, and get your thoughts on, on, you know, are you, are you comfortable with this project? Has your firm dealt with projects on this magnitude?
Um, you know, we've certainly done, done more projects where we're the ones, you know, digging soil out and sending it to facilities, you know, that all have acceptance criteria, maybe not as clean fill, but, you know, for different levels of the fill material, it's going to different locations. So, you know, I'm very familiar with, you know, moving soil of this magnitude and, you know, and the requirements to, that need to be met, you know, based on either where the material is coming from, what they're telling you where it's coming from, to, you know, to what types of analysis need to be run on that in order to, to, you know, get a certification that it's clean. So, yeah, you know, definitely across the board, very familiar, you know, with this type of a project, yes.
Is there like a spot checking process that goes on, like every so many truckloads or every, how many square, you know, feet come in? I mean, is there any type of oversight on that?
Yeah, in some situations there can be, you know, and it would usually be, you know, whether it's per, you know, 500 cubic yards or, you know, 300 cubic yards or 1,000 cubic yards, you know, and so that's usually how it is. And so that would be, you know, every, you know, 40 or 50 truckloads, you know, something of that nature. You know, depending on, and that also depends on where, what the source is, where the material is coming from. You know, if they're getting it from five or six different sources, then every one of those sources should have some sort of, you know, analyticals run on it to make sure, you know, what that material is and what's coming in, you know, and it's not just a per truckload sort of thing. But really it's each source needs to have, you know, documentation to come with it.
Got it. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Nicole?
Um, I, I, I have questions, but I think that until you and your agency actually go out to see the site and the scope of what this is, I really don't have any. I think it's really important for you guys to get out there and dig through all the material that's already there. And I'm reading over this here and it says the expectation of only two to three weeks to excavate what's already there, but they told us it could take six months. So I just want to make sure the size of this project is really understood, but no, no questions right now.
All right. Um, so I'm, I'm along the lines of, of Rob. I, I, I have questions, just like Nicole said, but like, until you understand what you're getting yourself into by seeing this and, and going through the data, it's going to be difficult. How, when's our next meeting? March 3rd? The birth of Leon? Um, can, is it possible that you could get out to the site before our next meeting and go through at least some of the, I know there's a ton of information on this property, but is there, is it possible that you could make it to the site? Take a look or someone from your firm or whatever? And then go through some of the data and give us an idea of what your plan is?
Yes, and I can definitely get a site visit in and, you know, and try and look at what some of the plans and information that's available, yes.
Yeah, because, um, like Nicole said, you know, they, uh, you know, two to three weeks to take it up would be great. That would be awesome, but we also heard it could take a whole lot longer and, you know. My, my thought process is with, with Stratford High School that's currently there. Because that, you know, there's so many, there's so many thought processes, how it got there, when it got there, who brought it there? You know, supposed to go here, went there, I mean, whatever. With, with that specific part of it, I would want someone from your firm there more often than not, at least for that part of the process. That's just my feeling on it because it's been in the ground. It's, if they're just going to focus on that and you have somebody in, in your firm there more often than not, you know, every other day or something like that, I, I would, I would feel comfortable with, with that part. And then as the filling process goes on and with, with what they're bringing in, then, you know, we could go, you know, every three days, week, you know, however, however you seem fit. But in my opinion, the, the actual excavation of Stratford High School of what's there, I think someone should be there. Should be there quite a bit, uh, just to, just to protect the safety of everything that's going on. That's what I have for that. So you're saying by March 3rd, you can at least make a site visit, take an, get an idea of where, where they put that material? And then you could have a, a little bit better of a plan for us?
Yes, I can do that.
Beautiful.
Just one more thing. When you did your quote here, you, you put it as 65 Cambridge to 64 Cambridge and four independents.
Right, yeah, I noticed that after it left.
I just wanted to make sure that it would be a sticker. No, I just. Sure, make sure he doesn't go to 65 and that's probably it.
Yeah, no, I, I noticed that too.
Never find it.
Uh, Nicole?
Yes, um, when you do the site visit, um, is there any way, because I know I was recently out there. Thank you, Rick. I don't know when the last time any of you guys were out there, if Dom.
I'd like, yeah, I've never been, I'd like to go.
We could go, I don't know, with Mr. McCarthy, when you guys do your visits, we could all see it together.
Yeah, Dom, I'll coordinate it.
Yeah, um, I would appreciate that. And then, Mr. McCarthy, do you have any other projects that you can, you know, give us as references to the things you've done before for remediation?
Um, so actually we just did a pretty large excavation digging haul project at the Sikorsky main facility down in Stratford, uh, back last fall.
Anybody else?
Sorry, I kind of have a question for, so I just want to clarify, are, have they been, they've been hired?
No.
They haven't been hired yet.
Well, there's only one firm left out of the four.
So I just want to make sure that we can, and he's okay with going out and doing all this without being hired yet. That's the only thing, we're asking you to do a lot and.
Rob's aware of the precursor to a contract.
Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure that we weren't overstepping, having, giving him a list of things to do before actually having him paid.
Right, but I think, you know, even in Bruno's business, you have to go look at the house before you give a quote, so.
No, no, I, I understand that, but I know talking about some of the material and a lot, you know, we're getting, I don't want to get.
Rob, where are you guys located again? I'm sorry.
Our office is in Weathersfield.
Oh damn, that's far, that's far.
Eh, it's not that far.
Good answer, Rob, that's a good answer. Not that far, perfect.
Connecticut's a small state.
Connecticut's, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, with the school of Florida, that's a long state.
That's a big state, all right. Do we have any other questions for Rob?
I have a, I have a comment, so if, if, it's not going to be there every day and it's going to be, I don't think it should be like a scheduled parent so they know when he's going to be there. He should maybe do random, you know what I mean?
Well, that stuff, that's all going to be worked out though. That all gets worked out.
I agree.
I agree with you.
Thanks, Rob.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Update on affordable housing plan?
Okay, another state mandate. Staff is working on that in-house. The outlawing, outlawing. The critical element, as I've been repeatedly telling this commission, is identifying the location that you will allow this to happen. We have three sites on 25. Mitch's, 10% set aside. Senior Housing, 100% because that's a HUD. And the 127 Main Street. You need to identify other locations. So start thinking about it. I'm going to give you a larger scale map so you can look at the parcels and start, you know, putting your dots on the locations. Because when you take it to the public hearing, you've got to lock in these locations. That is the most critical part. This plan is good for five years, every five years. P O C D every 10 years. We have two state mandates now for this body, affordable housing plan and the P O C D.
So is this for new structures or existing?
For the affordable housing?
Yeah.
No, we, we, we recognize what's existing. It's what you're going to consider in the future.
That's going to be crazy, wouldn't it?
So we have three. Mitch's, which is a mixed use right on the Trumbull Town Line. The senior housing, which you approved, but they haven't put the shovel in the ground yet. And the upcoming 127 Main Street, that's 10%. Mitch's and the luxury apartments are 10% set aside.
Is the senior housing moving forward, you know, with the financing?
Yeah, they're, uh.
100% of those.
They're getting different financing.
All right, any correspondence?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we received a letter from the Trumbull Planning and Zoning advising this board of the proposed MAP amendment for the mixed use on Mitch's property because three quarters in Trumbull, the other quarters in Monroe. They recently approved it, so there really isn't any need for this commission to send a letter of recommendation.
Okay.
So I just wanted to acknowledge that for the record.
Commissioner reports. Any commissioners have anything?
Saw the uprights building over at Amazon. The uprights are.
Yeah, the 10,000 square foot building.
Yeah, it's coming.
That should be finalized by the end of March.
Um, awesome.
And Mr. Chairman, yeah.
That's building is coming along.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah, words right out of your mouth.
Yeah, they, yeah, they got the stuff going up.
Yeah.
Man, you heard those.
Yeah, I know there's a little issue going on there, but.
And staff is recommending the next zoning regulations subcommittee next Tuesday. Town hall's closed for President's Day, Monday.
So Tuesday?
It's Tuesday, the 22nd work for the subcommittee, 5:30. Mary from Sully Engineering will go over the, uh.
I thought you already agreed on that.
Yeah, we did, I just wanted to make sure because it's a long holiday weekend, I didn't know. Is the 22nd work?
Yeah, man.
Okay, I'll get that posted.
I have a couple of things. So there's a rumor going around that Prenair Brett pulled out. I don't think that's true.
It's not true.
Okay.
So squash that rumor.
I did.
I didn't know they'd pull out because they already dug the hole over there.
They're digging.
They're already moving in there.
Their Brett is coming.
All right, what else?
And so, someone asked.
It's the express lane.
Someone asked me about the old Swanson Fish Market. Going on with that, it's falling apart.
Oh, the.
Yeah, they got chingling, they got wood there.
59, we have a new owner.
Okay.
That is going to come before the commission. They want to repair the roof, that's maintenance, which you're allowed to do. They are looking, knocks off the second floor, they would need a variance from the zoning board of appeals. They are looking to get an A2 survey done first because you got to know where the exact location is. But the good news, everyone, we have a new buyer and they want to improve the building, bring it back and bring in a reasonable for the.
Any, any insight to what they want to?
Maybe it should.
They haven't really reconfirmed it exactly. They're now want to stabilize the building because you, you got these older buildings in town and usually got to fix the roof and there's structural integrity and stuff.
I would say.
So do we know what they're going to put there?
Not yet. And that is forthcoming, so we'll let, we'll let the commission know. When Joe comes, when Joe comes to the next meeting and gives his report, we'll probably have that information.
There's some talk that they want to put another building in a rear.
What's that?
There's some talk that they might want to put another building in a rear.
Uh, yeah, that, that can not happen because of, of, of the zoning. So they're concentrating on fixing the building, squaring off the second floor because it jogs in and that's wasted space. But they would need a variance for that. So they're pursuing it, need to survey and getting the variance for the second floor expansion.
And they're knocking that back building down the other one, yeah.
Is there a large piece of property behind it or is it kind of end?
Uh, I'm not really sure on that topic, so, but Joe's going to give a full report on that because, uh, there's a lot of interest wide on that.
Because the parking lot is as much as the parking lot.
Hey, it's a tough site, it's being. Is this commission reasonable, but you have.
And no news on Roberto's, right?
Nothing on that.
I guess there's a new owner, but no open, no.
Yeah, I think solely about it. I think so.
Those are closed down.
He bought that property, he bought that property.
And, um, I went to Amazon the other day, they're crosswalk the trail. They had agreed to put up signs to other people, but nothing's there yet. Any idea when they're going to do that?
They're going to be doing that shortly.
Okay.
Sidewalks are in, lights are in.
Yeah, I drove down today.
And they got to finish that. Oh, and Stevens Lumber, uh, they're ready to put in that private drive. So that's moving forward, the ugly fence was removed.
Yeah, I saw that. Put it down there.
Yeah, they're, they're moving forward.
So.
Sure.
That's interesting.
My only, uh, my only thing is, uh, is about the excavation and fill permit. I know Mike signed it.
That was to get it recorded and he did not sign the, the drawings. You have to see the drawings first.
I didn't think this was supposed to get signed at all until we had.
You're getting confused with the signs of the, of the plans. This is needed so they can take it to the next level. This is needed so they can take it to the next level.
We approved it, so that part got signed, but the actual, we didn't.
They approved the permit, the zoning permit is what gets issued next.
We.
After the sign gets.
We approved it under the parameters that we would have hearing from the L E P and then this would get signed. But now this is signed, the L E P still has no idea what he's doing.
Well, he, he, he really does, he just, uh.
I know, but the problem is, the problem is we're leaving, well, it's signed, so.
I think the question is, can the landowners start operating right now with this approval?
No, the plans haven't been signed.
You gotta issue a zoning permit. The signs have not been, uh, signed off.
Just because we had to act on it within a certain amount of days.
It's kind of like with Z B A, when our variance is granted, you have that document.
The approval's been.
Where's the L P in here? It doesn't give you the zoning permit, the zoning, maybe conditions of approval.
It doesn't have any requirement here. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not overly happy about this, to be honest with you. Um, this is a legal document now.
Of course it is, yeah.
Here in here, does it talk about an L P? I haven't seen that in here at all.
There should be a line that says.
It's a win.
With the L P, uh, the windows practice mapped out by the, I can't remember what it says.
Oh, man, coffee.
It'll bring two next time.
I think you have a caterer. That on the budget?
Caterer, a little bit of snack here.
A little espresso?
Kitchen and everything like that.
Do we have a Sambuca? It's not allowed, is it?
I don't like this. A little bit of.
Yeah, this is signed with no L E P, anything in it.
Or is that same Jordan had?
They can start excavating.
No, 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 but that's not, but this legal document, what we required.
But if it stops them from doing anything.
It's just a, it's, to me, it's more, this wasn't, this wasn't supposed to be signed until.
Look at a final approval and we voted on it and it got signed again.
No, you, you know what it was? Okay, I, I understand. The inland, we piggybacked inland wetlands.
I have that, but we were looking for a scope of work.
And you are doing that.
I understand.
Every meeting, you are going to listen to Rob McCarthy explain the finalized scope of services.
Right, but I believe.
That's why I asked him, is he gonna prepare the scope of work to take?
No, they don't prepare it, it's what, it's what's submitted, it's already submitted. Solely Engineering and their team is gonna submit.
During discussion, I thought that we were gonna piggyback, painting and only we're gonna use the same L P as inland wetlands. So we were gonna put our requirement in.
Funds.
Of what we want the L P to do. We can't do it on that.
We can't put a scope into this.
We can't put a scope of work into it now because this is a legal document.
No, but it was supposed to be before it got signed, the scope of work.
Right, be in there.
No, but, yeah, before, yes, right, that's what we agreed upon.
Before this got signed, we're gonna hire our own L P.
Right.
Well, I, I disagree, this commission is gonna be very actively hiring the L P, the contract. You only have one L P.
All I'm, all I'm saying is this, it's just not, it got signed and it wasn't supposed to and it, it, it's.
Wait, I disagree on the signing part because it's.
No, the signing part was Mike was supposed to sign, sign off on this once we heard from the L E P. Before the L E P even spoke, we have a signed document. I don't care if it's a piece of paper, I don't care if it's a plan, I don't care what it is. We got a signed document and we had never heard from the L E P. That's not what we discussed, that's not what we approved. All I'm saying, and going forward, that's, it can't be this way, it just can't.
Um, my concern too on that is that we only have one L P left, he's never been to the site and.
And we have a signed document.
Everyone, we gotta move forward.
Rick, that's not a reason to just.
Oh, it's not a reason to do that.
This is the. Hear me out, hear me out.
We gotta move forward on a lot of projects. We don't just have Mike signing off on stuff just because we gotta move forward on a lot of projects.
I disagree, you're putting too much emphasis on that document. It's not the signed off site.
What happens is we specifically said something and it was not done to the way it was specifically said.
Okay, well, then I apologize because I misunderstood that.
But it's not, but what's misunderstood was we said it multiple, multiple times that nothing would get signed until we heard.
Site plan, if you read the minutes, it's, we said site plan.
Was never discussed about the site plan.
About site plan.
Oh, absolutely.
No, absolutely not, absolutely not.
Zero.
Yeah, who signed this?
Mike O'Reilly, the chairman.
He signed it?
Yes.
I know, but were we aware that he signed it?
No.
No, you, that, that's just an administrative action by the chairman.
But it was not supposed to get done until we heard from an L E P. That was exactly what was said, that's exactly how it was supposed to go down and that's exactly opposite of what happened.
Rick, let me give you an opinion on this, okay? Small person down in this. The, this project, people closed their eyes in the beginning, a lot of things happened that shouldn't have been. Now we really have to put a little.
Ketchup.
Ketchup.
Yeah.
Because, listen.
Everyone here, there's no activity could take place. It's a document confirming that a filling and grading action was taken by the commission. It's like Z B A when a variance is granted, that document gets recorded immediately, you can't get the zoning permit until you finalize all the conditions.
We also did not want to approve this project until we had everything.
The project isn't approved.
We did not want to sign anything until any, until everything was approved. That was 100% what happened. Now what happens is we go ahead and we get a piece of paper and we say, well, we're waiting for this before we sign anything and we didn't wait for that, we had it signed before it happened.
You, you have time limits on your actions.
And these are not my problems.
No, but they're state standards.
The L E P should have been here sooner then. What do you want me to do?
I think what's happened is that the, the lines got blurred between the administration and the, and the commission.
And they cannot get blurred on something that's.
You're all wrong. If I, if you, if, I'll have Barbara come here to put you at ease. You're, you're over, you're overblowing this. That signed document entitles them to file in the land records that an approval was made, not to start work.
One minute, did not, did we or did we not see in this commission? Okay, we, we were talking about hiring our own L P and we said, well, no, because inland wetlands has their own L P, but we're gonna piggyback on that L P.
And you're doing it.
On our requirements of what we want, that's not in this document.
Yes, it is.
It's not there, it's not in this document.
Yes, it is.
Doesn't say anything about a L P or about the scope of work that we want.